Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Welcome to our first business meeting in of 2020, and happy new year to everyone, and thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 2nd, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Could you please read the roll call?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O’Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
President Fox?
Here. Okay. Now, it’s time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I’d like to invite Beth Lovejoy and Marion Glenn to come up and lead us, please.
(Applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at Rlicatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, onto the minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of December 17th and also the organizational meeting minutes from January 2nd?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Counsel, I was not at the December 17th regular meeting. I was at the closed session, so I should abstain from the regular meeting.
Should we break those out, Madam Clerk?
And I was not in the closed session.[192.01][192.01](Laughter)
Should I take them separately, then?
I don’t think you have to. I think their recusal is...
Okay.
And my recusal as well.
Yes, of course. All right. Anyone else? Okay, the motion carries. Onto reports. Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Yesterday was a wonderful day to see so many people involved in community service activities throughout our city during Martin Luther King Day of Service, Justice, and Equality. It was truly a day on instead of a day off for so many of us. I was able to attend many of the events. I went to nine different places during the day, which doesn’t say anything about me, but rather about all the stuff that was going on in town, and every location was chock-full of parents and kids, a lot of kids, teenagers, younger kids. It was really, it was really great, and they were, they were busy. They started off at 7:00 in the morning down at Park Avenue in Ashwood, giving out coats and warm clothing and hot donuts, and not hot dogs, hot chocolate and donuts. So it was very inspiring, and the enthusiasm was terrific. So I want to thank, first of all, all the organizations that organized programs, and to the many participants that came together to help those in need. Congratulations to the Keeper of the Dream Award recipients and Summit residents, Zachary Brooks, for his work supporting autism awareness, and Leonard Prentice for his work aiding our homeless residents, as well as Morris Habitat for the Humanity and the Summit Environmental Commission. The Environmental Commission was acknowledged for its decades of dedication to environmental sustainability. I was very proud to be there yesterday when these deserving individuals and organizations were recognized. Here I am again, the 2020 census. People in City Hall have been telling me I’m obsessed, but since before the winter holidays, the city began distributing information on the 2020 census. As the launch date draws closer, I will continue to remind everyone that your response matters. Census results help determine how billions of dollars in federal funding flow into states and communities each year. The results also determine how many seats in Congress each, each state gets. The population count every 10 years is mandated by the Constitution and has been ongoing since 1790. All responses are confidential. Print, online, and video materials are being distributed to community organizations and others who are assisting the city in getting the word out. More information is available at thecityofsummit.org. With the help of interns we had this summer, we have created a resource directory for our seniors. The city website, cityofsummit.org, now has a section dedicated to identifying resources for Summit seniors listed under the Community tab, so at the top of the page, several tabs, the Community tab. With assistance from the Communications Office, I am reaching out to the community organizations that provide services to seniors to share the news of this resource directory. We’ll also probably be taking some of those, sort of a couple of posters that you can link to, but we’re going to put them on print and deliver them to the library, the connection, the Y, Sage, and so forth, because not every senior is going to go to the website and click on where they need to go. So, but please help the word, help spread the word, and tell people that this resource directory is now located on the website, and maybe you can print it out and share it with any of the seniors that you know. And that’s all I have tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, onto Michael Rogers for the city administrators to report. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Some important information from the City Board of Health. A raccoon in Summit tested positive for rabies on January 16th. Residents who may have had contact with a raccoon in the area of Russell Place between January 6th and 13th should notify a physician immediately or contact the Westfield Regional Health Department to discuss possible exposure and need for treatment. More information is available on the city website, cityofsummit.org. You may be aware that a citywide ban on carryout plastic bags, polystyrene, aka styrofoam, containers, and restrictions on plastic straw use will go into effect May 1st, 2020. Outreach by the city and its recycling advisory committee will take place over the next several months to ensure business owners and residents are informed well in advance of when these changes will go into effect. Information on the three ordinances and exceptions to them are available on the city website. This is the last week for curbside pickup for Christmas trees, hard to believe. Kindly place your tree to the curb by Friday, January 24th. Please do not place trees in a plastic bag, and we ask that you remove all decorations. Also, please dispose of wreaths with household garbage or throwaway at the transfer station in the upper-level trash pit. The city issues winter storm guidelines whenever snow, sleet, freezing rain, or extreme cold is in the forecast. Please follow the City of Summit NJ on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for storm updates and find information on the snow ordinance and other guidelines at the city website. And I’ll just end with this. As widely reported a couple weeks ago, a former DCP employee was criminally charged by the Union County Prosecutor’s Office for various offenses. While I cannot speak to the criminal, anything about the criminal investigation, I will say that the city administration acted swiftly and responsibly to ensure a proper investigation was conducted when purchasing irregularities were discovered. Internally, we carefully reviewed our purchasing protocols and modified vendor requirements and procedures to provide for tighter controls. And that’s all I can say about that this evening. Thank you, Council President. I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Tonight, I don’t have a council president’s report, so our next item of business is our ceremonial award. Mayor Rades will be giving the Volunteer of the Year awards to two very deserving women, Marion Glenn and Beth Lovejoy.
Ladies, will you join me at the podium? And Council President, would you join me as well?
Certainly.
I am very, very proud to, this is the second annual, almost annual, Volunteer of the Year award. We just wanted to get it right and make sure we found the right volunteers. So you guys are being honored and for your tremendous service over the years, for your environment, working in the environmental community. I’m going to, since I don’t have the details without the paper, and I apologize for that, but Marion, as everyone should know, has been a member of the Environmental Commission, golly, since 2005, 2003?
Two.
2003 it began, and you’ve stayed on the commission for many years, so 2008, and you were back on the commission in 2009, and again, you were there as a member...
I think she’s been on the whole time.
The whole time.
Yeah.
And then...
Until just a month ago.
Right, and you’ve been on the Mayor Sustainable Jersey Grant Subcommittee for so many years, and you’ve done so much. The Pershing River Greenway is an enormous amount of work, and I am grateful to you for that. And Beth, you have been on the Environmental Commission since 2013 through 2019, and again, very active in the Sustainability Advisory Committee, having written most of the reports that have gotten us our Silver Award every year. It is tremendous how much you have done. When, when the, we talked about this the other day, yesterday, the Environmental Commission started in 2000, 45 years ago, and it was kind of a small group of folks that were not particularly really focused in their own right, but they didn’t have the wide-ranging respect and support of the community. And largely because of the efforts of you two, I firmly believe that the Environmental Commission is one of the most highly respected commissions in this, in this city, and has a tremendous outreach. The tentacles that you have grown throughout our community, across all partisan boundaries, young and old, and that’s really, really tremendous. I can’t thank you enough for everything that you have done for our city. We are grateful, and we are very lucky to have you. You’ve been wonderful teachers, and you’ve been hard workers, and gracious, and enthusiastic and supportive the entire time. Would you like to add something?
Yes, I’ll just say quickly, I’ve had the, the honor and the benefit of working with both of you on the Environmental Commission, and I’ve learned a tremendous amount from both of you. I started on the Environmental Commission when Marion was chair, and then was fortunate enough to learn from her and to, to learn about all the, you know, all the, the many, many projects that were being done throughout the years. And then, when Beth came in as well, Beth was the person who really was the brainchild behind the Sustainable Jersey applications and, you know, did a huge amount of work getting all of those things documented, so it’s all now, you know, something that’s in place, and it’s, it needs maintenance now, but it’s not this huge undertaking that it was the first time we did it. So I thank both of you for your work and for all of your dedication to the environment.
I have to add one personal thing. When I was first mayor, Beth came to me with this idea of having seal power to do energy audits through in our, in our community, and so they did one at my house, and while they were there, they were televising it or filming it, and they were climbing all through my basement, and yeah, they go all over the place. And I remember looking at Beth saying, “She’s not a good idea,” but it turns out that it was, because we’ve had a couple of hundred people in Summit who have homeowners who have gone through the energy audits and have been able to save money and, and also have increased the, the efficiency of their homes. So, and it’s, and the star, energy star that you did throughout there, it’s just amazing what you’ve done, both of you. You seem to have boundless energy and boundless ideas.
Yeah.
We have a good team to work with.
Yeah, well, Marjorie has been a part of that team for a better few years, too.
Thank you.
Rosie’s been my go-to person.
Everyone on that day says her go-to.
We’re all.
Yep.
Let’s, let’s do this.
Yeah, we’ll do the award. You won’t give it to her?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Let’s do it. Yeah.
And then, because I know you both have been downsizing, we’re going to stop.
Thank you so much.
update for the firehouse with Chief Evers, and I believe we have some other guests here as well. Okay?
Hi, America, the President, Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to put our department... To update Counsel on where we stand with the new fireworks project. As you know, it’s been a long time coming. We have with us today is Christopher Nead from LeMay Erickson Wilcox. Their firm has been a part of this project from the onset, when we started with need assessment study on our current building to feasibility studies, to site selection. They’ve been a part of the hallway through. They’re a great asset to the city and the summit. And also with me today is a member of the Summit Fire Department. A lot of the design and work you see today, we can tell you, is really from the hard work of the, of the members of the Summit Fire Department. We started this project with a goal to meet the deficiencies our old building does not have, and also present a building to this council that’s going to be within our budget and frame, and we think we accomplished all that. But tonight, we’re going to go over step by step on how we got to this point, some design features, and where we stand timing-wise, some of the features that were proposed to move forward in our building. So with that, I will have Christopher to come up and do your thing. Thank you.
Good evening. Christopher Cady with LeMay Erickson Wilcox Architects, one of the design principals. Very happy to be back with you again. A lot of familiar faces, a few new, but Council President, Mayor, all staff, council members, it’s great to be here. As Chief said, giving an update for where we are. We’re excited. We’re kind of shifting into, from a design aspect, the final phase, the construction document phase. Last time I’m here, we were beginning kind of the transition between schematic design and design development. Having now completed that, worked with Chief and the team, getting the project back on budget at the end of design development, we’re very excited to be here wrapping up what ultimately will result by midsummer, your bid documents that you’ll be taking to the street to get a contractor to help realize this vision. So run through, just give you an update of kind of where we have been. Technology stays with me. Most people are familiar, the site over on Broad Street, adjacent to the, to the parking garage and occupying a portion of the current commuter lot, as we zoom in, seeing for those to understand a little bit how the building is going to operate. We’re taking advantage of that intersection there at the corner as the primary response coming out of their before-long apparatus bays. One of the key design features in working with the team early on was accommodating housing the entire fleet of vehicles, so that everything can be protected from the weather, so there are slightly longer-than-average bays to accommodate all those vehicles indoors and protect them and support them over time. The primary response heads to that intersection to allow easy access in multiple directions and quick access for response throughout the city. Secondary apron out the rear, so it’s a bi-directional station, if you will, for the secondary reserve and other support vehicles that can come out to the rear. You also see identified location of the, of fuel station that will support both the fire vehicles, but also, as we understand, be available for other city vehicles as well. Dedicated fire department parking adjacent to that, and then just kind of continuing west, you see the edge of what will be the remaining portion of the commuter parking lot. We have to update it and continue to evolve the station design itself. One of the key aspects we’ve been working on, on the full firefighter design team, has been how to best approach decontamination. That’s something our firm has taken a very strong stance and leadership in the industry in fire station design, and what we’ve referred to as hot-zone design that really separates out and identifies areas that are most likely to be exposed to these very serious carcinogens and contaminants the firefighters are exposed to in their work, and how we identify that, protect that, isolate it within the building, and provide, provide very specific transitional decontamination areas where they can become clean, have an opportunity to shower. One of the catchphrases that’s very important is shower within the hour, so an opportunity to have that shower, change of clothes as soon as they come back from a, from a response event, and provide that. Here, both because of the nature of the site itself, as well as our hot-zone strategies, the majority of those red zones or more potentially contaminated spaces are here on the first floor with the apparatus bays where the PPE is stored, and then kind of isolating and fully separating the upper levels that remain as clean, green spaces for the offices and day spaces. We have also provided at the mezzanine level, there’s an opportunity for some training space. This is something that we also take very seriously, firefighter preparedness, both in regular, just physical fitness activities, as well as specific drills and opportunities to practice on-site without taking somebody out of service or taking a vehicle out of service. So we have an open mezzanine that goes into the bays, that they’re able to practice letter revolutions, specific drills, Denver drills, and things of very specific activities and scenarios that they may experience in the field, so that we have a training mezzanine that is directly adjacent to the bays on this level. The upper level, second level above the mezzanine, is the primary kind of house, day spaces for the firefighters, as well as this being the headquarters building, the new headquarters offices for the chief and staff. One of the other key features to the bottom right in yellow is the multi-function training space slash EOC, so it is a space that will be set up and operated and offer emergency operations, control center for the city, taking that dual, dual purpose of, of multi-use space, but it also serves the training center for them. Upper level roof plan, again, achieving from the earlier design comments and aesthetic, kind of hip roof aesthetic that you see from the street, surrounding a mechanical pit that’s screened by that roof to the center. We have taken some feedback. Part came through the, the recent cost-cutting efforts we made at the end of design development, but also an opportunity to actually go back and incorporate one of the comments we had heard previously during the design review, and looked at the opportunity to bring the brick all the way down, so I think this actually responds to it. There’s a water table at the brick level that we see, the brick comes all the way down to the ground level now, but still with that, you know, the large glass kind of frontal space with the fire prevention education that Chief has been targeting, and the rest of the, the aesthetic largely remaining the same as previously presented. This view coming down broad from downtown. Kind of as we move from schematic design to design development and now into the construction document phase, we’ve, we’ve kind of resolved the majority of the design questions, the systems are understood, and we’re beginning to really just pack, package those bid documents that the contractor will, will bid and ultimately use to construct, so there’s some of those elevation drawings that are from that set, and we’ll start to kind of piece out all of those details, the roof details, and buildings and wallings, wall sections that become that final, what we used to call blueprints, but now the bid documents for your team. Schedule-wise, just a quick review of where we are. CD phase, we officially started in mid-December. We’ll be wrapping that up in June of this year, and then going from there into the bidding phase, and we’re currently working with Chief and procurement on some details on the bidding schedule, so those are kind of preliminary dates, but targeting midsummer to be in bidding and permitting and sequencing those accordingly per city protocols, targeting construction then, starting at the beginning of probably the fourth quarter of this year. We anticipate for building of this size, it’s probably about 14 to 16 months. I know Chief and we were just talking how to plan accordingly with weather delays and those kinds of things that are realities for construction, so probably allowing for a 16 to 18-month period of actual construction. With that, I’m happy to answer, answer any questions of materials I presented or any other questions you may have about the project.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Naidoo?
Are we discussing cost estimates? Are we discussing cost estimates in the building?
Yeah.
Let’s talk cost estimates. I mean, that’s the biggest thing you, so, so why don’t you go through and talk to us about what the, what you have right now as your cost estimates?
Chief, do you want to talk about that a little bit? Yeah, so, so right now, the building came in at, our budget was $11.8 million, and we came in just about $110,000 under budget. The building itself was about 11.3 with the fuel systems in place, everything brought us up to about 11.7, just around there, 11.6 for the whole entire building to be built. That also takes into consideration architectural costs, contingency costs, escalation costs to bid, those things that are normally in a building of this size and nature. So those are all the, the costs that go with that. There is a more detailed, broken-down cost estimate that we don’t, this kind of detail that the council does have and Safety has, that goes over every little area and how we got to the price, but longshore, it is about $110,000 under the budget that we currently propose for 11.8 million.
Let me just follow up, because we have seen cost estimates, and I think it’s fair to the public to understand where we are, because this is public money, right? So let’s just talk about it in a little bit more detail.
Yeah, definitely.
So one of the things is, the cost estimates assume about $333 per square foot for construction, right? I want to hear from you, Chris, I guess, because you’re the expert here. Is that a reasonable estimate?
Very much. In today’s market, I think that’s actually very good.
Is that very good, as in that is low, and so therefore, we would expect actual bids to be higher?
I think it’s representative of the current market. What I would caution is, the market right now is continuing to escalate at a higher rate than it has over the last 10 years. So these last two years, the market has been increasing. We do account for that in the current escalation, but we’re seeing escalation rates that are 5% and 6%, whereas five years ago, we were talking about 3% to 4%. So the annual escalation is a little bit higher, but the cost per square foot in that 330, 340 range is very realistic.
And that, that’s reflective of this area?
Correct, yes.
Right, okay.
What is the escalation rate built into the, into the estimate that you’ve given us?
Where is it?
What is it?
What rate is included?
Yes, because you said it was 5% to 6% that you’re seeing.
Yeah, I believe what’s shown is 5.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Are there, when you go through the bidding process, are there going to be alternates for certain things that say environmental issues, and, and then I, I know there’s going to be a question about solar panels on the roof?
So we’ve been actually just recently talking to Chief of what items, as we’re moving into the CD phase, now’s the time to make the, identify those items that we do want to consider. Roof was one that we, he and I were just talking about, part of the cost-cutting at the end of DDE, changed that from a standing-seam metal roof to a less expensive architectural asphalt shingle. That is an item that is a particularly easy type of transition to put in as an alt. There’s not a substantial difference in the systems or the structure, it’s really kind of just the finish layer that would change. Items that require more constructive difference, a little more complex in that alternates, but there are certainly the ability to do that as we identify the locations and items we want to. PV, the building is, as you hit on that, I’ll just go and touch on it, the building was designed to accommodate photovoltaic panels. There’s a space for it in the electrical, electrical room, conduit, and such, but not the actual equipment itself. We can talk further if you want to on whether or not it’s a good fit for this building relative to the roof, there’s some details on that, but as an opportunity for, at alt, yes, it would be able to do that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So I appreciated the Chief going over with me all of the work that went, the research that went into it, and I’m a visual person, and so I know that we are going to be a regional resource, and we’ve not, we’re not being the most state-of-art, but is there a comparable new site in New Jersey that if someone wanted to take a look and see what are the new firehouses looking like in New Jersey that we would take a look at?
That’s a great question. I have to do a little bit of research and get back to you on that one. If I can, I’d be happy to provide Chief with some recommendations that he can pass and ultimately a meaningful asset is well below a target level.
So if we change the pitch of the roof, you could increase the amount of area that's available for photovoltaics?
We would likely need to take off the hip roofs altogether and have an entirely flat roof and maximize all of that flat roof with photovoltaic to even start to get towards a meaningful percentage.
And the other question I had was, I know that in the design of fire stations, there's few firms that do the work that you guys do, right? But in the construction of a fire station, is there any portion of this fire station that a non-general contractor would be necessary to do? That is, do you need any kind of specialized companies involved in the construction of this building or can, you know, anybody who puts up a building?
Sure.
Put a bid in for it?
For municipalities whose procurement allow them to require experience in a specific field and different groups have different requirements in what they're allowed, we do like to require as part, in part of the bidding requirements that they have built a fire station or in the last five years or something like that. We recommend that if and when you can. There are complexities that are unique to the equipment, especially around the bay areas that are complex, but more often than not, that's we, the municipalities we work with aren't able to do that and it is general contractors that are coming in without necessarily past experience. So it can be done, we recommend preferably it's somebody that has the experience with a fire station in the past, but our job is to provide documents to make sure somebody can build it.
That anybody could build it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? Come on up.
Hi, Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. I thank you both for your presentation. Just a good question about what the anticipated ongoing costs of this building would be in comparison to the older building, given it's newer, there's a facade, anything you can comment on the thermal envelope of the building that would potentially, you know, have incurred costs in the future for maintenance?
Great question. I can't give you a specific dollars comparison. We were involved and completed the existing facility assessment of the current facilities, which are, as many know, built in four stages dating back to 1902. The majority of the building has practically no insulation in the walls as a simple, you know, observation. So we are meeting and exceeding all the basic code standards as well as, you know, we're actually not pursuing per coordination of the city lead certification, but we're basically designing it to those standards anyways. It's how our office operates. It's not additional cost, it's just good detailing and smart design. If you want further information that gets into details of the comparison, we could work with our mechanical engineer and give you some of those numbers, but in terms of highly efficient building, this is meeting what would be comparably a lead silver status building in terms of its overall efficiency, both the mechanical systems and the insulated envelope.
Any other questions from the public? All right, any other questions from members of council? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point in the meeting, members of, members of the public have the opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda. So if you have a comment, please step up. Okay, seeing no comments, we are moving on to resolutions. Our first resolution is from the Administrative Policies Committee, councilmember and I do.
Thank you, council president. So as most of you probably know, we on council and the mayor make very few statements. It's not our general practice to make statements about either national, state or even local issues for that matter, but we do on occasion do make statements. But even more rarely have we made a resolution that sets forth a statement about who we are. But tonight, that's exactly what we are proposing to do in this resolution. It is a resolution intended to make a statement to this community about who we are as both a governing body as well as what who we are as a community. And I want to thank the Interfaith Council that made a similar statement like this many, many years before us and borrowed liberally from their ideas that they had in it. And I also want to thank the other members of council as well as the mayor, each of whom almost virtually everyone here gave feedback onto this statement. And so since it's a relatively short statement, I am going to read it in whole so those of you either both here as well as who are watching us on television know what this statement is. So this is the statement of the Summit City Council and the mayor on the 25th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Justice, Equality and Service to Others. We, the common council and the mayor of the city of Summit, New Jersey, honor the 25th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Justice, Service, Equality and Service to Others by unequivocally affirming our community's support for inclusivity and diversity. We affirm these principles because as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, quote, "A man dies when he refuses to stand up for that which is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true," close quote. We believe in the equal treatment of all of our citizens as well as the stranger among us. We denounce rhetoric of bigotry and hatred and condemn groups or individuals who spread or incite hatred and division. We call upon all to speak with civility and respect for each other's thoughts, ideas and perspectives. We call upon our leaders to uphold the principles of justice, fairness and equality to all. We do not tolerate prejudice based on race, religion, gender, sexual orientation or national origin. We believe that we must all work toward eliminating prejudice and treating each other based on the content of our character. We celebrate that our community strives to be an example by valuing and engaging diverse races, ethnicities, religions, ages and abilities and counts these differences as strength. I think it is necessary sometimes to remind us all of who we are and to speak out loudly about what we believe in. And with that, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
Second.
Sorry.
That's perfect. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Good evening. Please state your name and address.
My name is Hannah Ordin. I live at 15 Irving Place. I'm speaking tonight as a resident of Summit and also as the current president of Summit Interfaith Council, along with Reverend Vernon Williams, who is the vice president of the Summit Interfaith Council, and we are both also members of the Interfaith Council's Anti-Racism Committee. The Summit Interfaith Council spent over a year discussing and coming to agreement on our statement of common ground. Our statement of common ground shares with this statement from the Summit City Council an affirmation of equal treatment of all our citizens as well as the stranger among us. We also join with you in denouncing the rhetoric of bigotry and hatred. In our statement of common ground, the Summit Interfaith Council called upon our elected officials to renounce racism, sexism, bigotry and xenophobia and to condemn groups that spread hate. We want to commend the elected leaders of the city of Summit for hearing our call and responding. We recognize that public statements and resolutions are important in guiding our actions and the directions we take as a community. We have always more work to do to ensure equal treatment for everyone and an end to bigotry, discrimination and hatred. We look forward to continuing to work together with our city government to strengthen our commitment to the values expressed in this resolution. I also wanted to read a statement from Annette Dwyer, who is the chair of Shaping Summit Together. She is in Boston taking care of her mother who is ill and, but wanted to be here tonight as well. This is her statement. "Good evening, my name is Annette Dwyer, resident of 116 Maple Street. I regret that I cannot be with you this evening on this momentous occasion of the reading of the statement of the Summit Common Council regarding the 25th anniversary of the day that celebrates the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life and legacy. I would like to thank each and every member of Common Council and the office of the mayor who worked on this statement. By delivering this statement, you are showing evidence that Summit's Common Council can and will act on behalf of the health of the body politic. These comprehensive articulations and affirmations provide the superordinate ideals which can guide our respective activities on behalf of all those who live, work, worship and/or volunteer in Summit. Stakeholders of Summit have been striving for these 25 years and longer to ensure that Summit reaches its full potential as a mature, diverse and inclusive suburban community. They are leaders of houses of worship, leaders of programs, program providing agencies, teachers and administrators of student classrooms during the day and after school. Everyone is affected positively by a climate of respect, inclusion, differing gifts and talents, cultural richness and human stories, which when shared in a climate of trust, endear us to one another. Delivered by Summit's mayor and common council, this statement sends a clear message to the entire population of Summit that we uphold character and values which make us stronger together, that we can engage in civil discourse about matters which affect members of the community and that we can resolve to work together to make Summit a place where everyone belongs and that justice, equality and peace can prevail. I can think of no better act that you can take at this time than to deliver this statement to assure all stakeholders that there are many reasons to trust a common set of values which when followed will help us learn about one another and together create a vibrant climate of interpersonal harmony. Thank you for your leadership of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in absentia."
Thank you so much for your comments. If you wouldn't mind providing copies of your statements to the clerk, do you?
A little bit scribbled on, is that okay?
You can email it tomorrow morning if you want.
Okay, thank you so much for your leadership. We appreciate all that you do for this community.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Come on up, Betty.
Good evening. Betty Adams, Betty Livingston Adams, 12 Shadyside Avenue, Summit. Thank you for your recognition of and support for 25 years of celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Summit. I don't know if this is the first time any sitting Summit City Council has deemed it appropriate to take that step, so I do thank the current council for memorializing our civic celebration in this recognition. And I also want to add that I am so delighted to have the opportunity to work with Annette Dwyer on that, on the day. Her commitment, energy and dedication to hold, nurture and continue to find ways to expand and enhance the involvement of all our residents is truly commendable. At the same time, I would like to respectfully request another statement from you, our city council, one that speaks to how the council will govern and hold our city employees, departments and agencies accountable for opposing hatred and bigotry. Are there ordinances or best practices in place under development or contemplate it to ensure that all persons representing the city are acting on its behalf, conduct themselves in ways that uphold our principles and commitments to diversity and inclusivity? That includes respecting the dignity of those with whom they interact, whether residents or persons who live, work or transit our city boundaries. Can we expect new policies or oversight on hiring, managing or disciplining of city employees or suppliers who violate your statement and principles of inclusivity and diversity? I recognize that such a statement will require considered thought, reflection and commitment to draft, not to mention some soul-searching and legal counsel. Yet I humbly submit that it is the next step in demonstrating how our city council will promulgate and uphold standards by which our city employees, representatives and elected or appointed officials as well as residents will make this resolution a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Did you have a written statement that you could?
I'll email it.
Okay, that would be great. And thank you for your leadership in the Martin Luther King Day of Service. As far as your question, I think it's a very good one. I, you know, our statement is intended to encompass city employees as well and, you know, city staff as well, so, but we will be looking at whether there are specific measures that we need to put in place and I will throw that to the administrative committee to take a look at as a follow-on.
And to promulgate and publicize so that people know that there is that firm support behind it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments from council? All right, moving on.
We need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote, right, of course. Okay, so do I?
You have a motion to second.
Yes, so, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, any opposed? All right, it passes, so we're on to law and labor. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Madam, Council Madam President. Is that what we call you?
It's interesting.
Yeah, I don't know. Council President, we'll just go, we'll just do that, you know, it's so much easier. Batter up. So law and labor number one is Resolution 6863, and I ask to declare one vacancy, unlike the literature here says three vacancies in the Department of Community Services. Basically, we have an individual who is retiring effective April 1st and that we are adding one person within our public works. As we discussed in closed session, I move this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, do we have any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, okay, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to law and labor number two.
Number two, ID number 6974. We have another retirement within the department of, fire department is to declare vacancy. We have an individual who retired, his last day was a week ago, and basically we are declaring a vacancy in our fire department. Again, this is not a, an additional position and they are budgeted for, so I move this resolution.
And I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we're on to a series of resolutions from capital projects and community services. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. All right, first capital projects resolution is number 6986 and that's to authorize execution of an affordable housing deed restriction agreement. This is the agreement for the development at 123 through 127 Summit Avenue and that development had an obligation of two affordable housing units. There's a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom unit and this is to authorize the deed restriction, which will be in effect for 30 years on that property. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to bundle the next four resolutions if that's agreeable to you.
Excellent plan.
Thank you. The next four resolutions are all to authorize consulting engineering services and this is something that the Department of Community Services does. They bring in engineering services periodically, professional engineering firms to assist on different needs and the capital projects. So there are four of these tonight. The first one is for number 6898 and that is for Boswell Engineering. Boswell Engineering helps us with oversight and inspection. Boswell Engineering helps us with oversight and inspection services. The second is number 6900 for Mott McDonald, who does LSRP and survey work. The third is number 6901, and that's for Neglia Engineering Associates to assist us with sanitary sewer work. The fourth one is number 6902, and that's for Mazur Consulting, who does traffic work for us. All of these are firms that we have worked with in the past, and we've been happy with their services, and I would ask that we authorize these four resolutions.
Second.
Does anyone have any comments on these bundled resolutions?
I was just going to let, you know, just confirm with you that all these rates that are listed here are rates that we have established, not rates that are coming from the outside source.
That's correct. They were established, that's correct. Maybe Paul Kaskas can affirm this, but I believe these were established in the RFQs that were put out, that these were, and these were the rates that we are currently using for these companies as well. Is that right?
That's correct, through you, Council President. So we set the rates, and they're the rates that we've established over the past few years. We haven't raised them. But those rates are established by the city, and then we receive the RFQs. We received eight, and then selected four of the eight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Right. Any other questions? Councilmember Naiden.
Let me just expand on something here, which is, I think those who follow this will know that virtually every single year, we have usually the same group of entities that we approve of. And I know that Paul and his team, as well as those who are serving on Capitol projects, whether this year or previous years, go pretty carefully through whether or not these are the right entities. But, I mean, I think there's, and that process has to be rigorous, I think, because I don't think it makes sense for folks to, who are our contractors, to assume that every single year, they will just simply be re-upped, because that creates a complacency. Now, I will say, from my own professional background, I have worked with some of these companies separately, and I will tell you right now that the rates that we set for them are much lower than what they will get in private industry. But what I will also say is, like, private industry sometimes hires these guys, like I do, on a one-off job, and that's it. They'll hear from me once, and then five years from then, from now, they'll hear again from me. We provide for steady income, year after year, and that gives a base for them to calculate what their budgets are and so forth. And so there is real value in what we do, because they know that if they provide good service to us, they're going to get a constant income stream. And so it should not be taken for granted by these companies that we're simply going to re-up with them, just because we have done so in the past. I know it seems like we do that, but I know that this year, and I'm sure previous years in cap, people take it very seriously, and I know Paul and his team certainly do, as to the kind of service that we're getting for the dollars we're spending.
Any other comments? Any comments from members of the public? All right, any comments from members of council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Little, Capitol Projects number six, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 6903, and this is to authorize a professional service agreement for our 2020 city planner, which is Burgess Associates. This is our in-house city planning contract, and they come in once a week and provide in-house city planning for us. We've been happy with their services, and I would ask that we approve this resolution to retain them again for this year.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Capitol Projects number six, Councilmember Little.
Continuing with the theme, this is number 6909, which is to authorize professional services agreement for our 2020 redevelopment attorney. As you've heard at many of our council meetings recently, we have an ongoing project with the redevelopment of Broad Street West, and this is to retain the services again this year for our attorneys, which is, our attorney is Joe Marazini, the firm of Marazini and Falcone. They've been excellent legal representation for us, and we are extremely happy with their services and will be, this resolution is to retain them again. I will say that we anticipate being reimbursed for the amount of these services under the constructs of the conditional designation of developer agreement that we approved at a previous council meeting. We expect that these costs will be reimbursed to us through that agreement, but this is to authorize that we retain them again as our attorneys, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So moving on, Capitol Projects number eight.
Okay, now we're going to change direction a little bit. So Capitol Projects number eight is number 6912, and this is to authorize a change order in the City Hall air conditioning chiller replacement project for the amount of $14,302. So that sounds like a big increase in this project. It actually, I have better news than it seems on paper. The total cost of this project is under budget, and there were two parts to this project. There was the chilling equipment and the refrigerator tower. When they went to do the second part of the project, which was the chiller replacement, they realized that there were some valves that needed to be replaced as well, that were not in the scope of the original project. So that's why there's an increase, a change order increase, but the overall project is under budget, and it makes sense to do this now while we're replacing the chiller tower. It's much less expensive to replace these valves now, since they need to be replaced and to do them at a later point. So we are recommending that we authorize this change order for $14,302.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Councilmember Little, number nine.
Aye. Thank you, Council President. Capitol Projects number nine is number 6975, and this is the annual resolution to authorize deer culling at Reeves Reed Arboretum, and that will be done by the county under the New Jersey Fish and Game bow hunting regulations, and I would ask that we approve this resolution as well.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, last but not least, Capitol Projects number 10, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. The last Capitol Projects Resolution is number 6976, and this is to authorize an additional location to the list of the approved sites that we have already approved in a previous resolution for the 2020 Earth Day cleanup. So this is good news. We continue to have more and more volunteers every year that participate in the Earth Day cleanup, and the other good news is they often go to the sites, and the residents are taking good care of the sites, and there isn't as much to clean up year after year as there have been in previous years, so we are always looking for new sites and new areas that we can expand into to make the Earth Day success. So this is to add an additional site of the Family Aquatic Center to the list of sites that we are going to be working on this year. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now moving on to finance, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Resolution number 6942. This resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those within sufficient funds. This is a regular occurrence until the 2020 budget is adopted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All right, this one requires a roll call. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll call?
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naiden.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay. So motion carries, and we're moving on to finance number two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 6936 is to authorize the annual salaries for city staff. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finance number three has been pulled, so we'll move on now to safety and health. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I am pleased to ask for the approval of number 6939, which is for our fire department to receive a grant. The grant is in the amount of $2,710. It is for a volatile organic compound meter and testing kit, and this grant is not requiring matching funds, and an important clarification that was raised was it is not for us to try this, and then we have to buy these meters in the future. This is actually a grant that our fire chief has an interest in, and so I would like to ask the council to approve number 6939.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, we now are up to the consent agenda. We are going to try something a little different and ask for comments from the public, but I don't think we have anyone here who's likely to comment. But if no one has any comments on the consent agenda, we'll go ahead. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now we're on to council members' comments. Are there any council members who have any comments? Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I feel like I crossed the street.
No, that's fine. I was debating whether to make any comment at all, but I just want to just make sure that people, I know that the city administrator talked about the plastics restrictions that go into effect on May 1st, and I want to make sure that people understand, it is not, this is something that's going to be, first of all, businesses already know about it. There's been a lot of effort to get businesses to know about it, but it's not on individuals, it's not upon residents that there is a plastics restriction, right? So people, I know that there was a Facebook post by the city, and there was comments on it about, you know, what does this mean for individuals? It doesn't mean anything for individuals. It means something for businesses, though, and this is what now 46 towns in New Jersey have done, which is it is restricting the use of single-use checkout bags, with certain exceptions, and Styrofoam, and then straws upon request. And that's probably the only thing that, even that is not really that impacts residents, but that's the only thing that maybe the change in behavior is just to, people have to ask for straws. So we'll continue to, I think, go out there and tell businesses and make sure that they know. SDI certainly has been aware of it now for a while, and hopefully, businesses in the downtown and other areas of the city know about it. But it is something that's been approved, will come down the pike, but it's certainly not one that directly impacts individuals, but it does impact how businesses do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.